Welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting in Richmond of August 16th, 2023. So it looks like we have a couple of guests and five of our six members. So, welcome everybody. I'll review the agenda so that we can then take any public comments that are items not on the agenda. We're going to review our minutes and then we're going to continue to discuss Act 47, which we started on the last couple of meetings. We'll do that for an hour. And then we'll go to number six, which is to talk about the Rogers Lane project. So, does anyone have any additions or corrections or changes they would like to make to the agenda? Okay, and would anyone from the public like to make a comment not related to any of the items on the agenda? Chris? You seem to be muted. Yeah, okay. You've you just got muted. Maybe Keith muted you.
Oh boy, this is fantastic. Give me a second. Let me figure this out. Mark, I don't, Mark, I don't see you as muted.
Mark, we can hear Mark. Yep.
You can hear him, I'm sorry. Isn't that Chris?
Chris, we cannot hear you. His lips are moving, but no noise is coming out.
Hear what you say. I'm not sure. You're not muted.
All right, and did you see the message from Tom Assel?
I did.
He is from MMCTV.
Okay, hang on. Yeah, this is, this is the Uber policing that I'm going through right now. So, one second.
Who's controlling the meeting?
I am.
Okay.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I just had to make sure the computer was selecting the right microphone. Sorry about that.
Okay. So you had a comment you wanted to make. Did you have a question? Now that we can hear you.
That I reached out to Susan Breezy of the Jericho Planning Commission, but we still haven't managed to connect given vacations and everything else. But I hope to have her lined up for the next meeting, failing that, the one after.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. I was gonna do that in other business, but we've got it, got it taken care of, so. Okay, so hearing no changes or additions to the agenda besides that, no comments from the public on non-agenda items. We'll move on to number three on our published agenda, or number four, which is to review the minutes for our August 2nd meeting. The draft has been posted. Are there any comments or corrections or changes that anybody would like to make to those minutes? Okay. So hearing none, we will accept those minutes into the record as written. And we'll move on to number five, which is our continued discussion of Act 47, formerly called S-100. And we have, this is the second in our series of three meetings that we're kind of unpacking the requirements that are going to be needed for the changes we're going to have to make to our zoning. At our 7/19, how about the other document, Keith?
I'll work on it.
Okay. At our meeting of July 19th, we reviewed 16 items that Act 47 has mandated for municipalities to make to the amendments in their zoning. And we whittled that list of 16 down to about five or six. And then we began to focus on those five or six. So, the point of the new mandates from Act 47 is to help alleviate the housing crisis. We want to try to keep that in mind by removing some barriers to the building of dwellings. So, and for anyone who is watching this at any point, the entirety of Act 47 can be found in the Vermont laws website. You just search for Act 47 or S-100 and the whole text will come up. There's a lot of other material in there besides the changes that municipalities have to make to their zoning, changes to Act 250, committees that are formed to study this and that. So, not a lot of the 76 pages is material that we need to deal with, so. So we've got the five that we started talking about last time, and we're going to go into a little more detail about those five. Keeping in mind that these changes that we're making to our zoning are for districts that have water and sewer, municipal water and sewer. So, there are two requirements for the districts that need changes to be made. One is that they allow residential uses. Well, yeah, of course, because these are about residential uses. And the second one is that they're served by municipal water and sewer. So, Keith, are you finding the other document?
Well, it should be up. We're talking about the 8/16 meeting.
This is the residential density proposal. We need the meeting memo.
That's what I have up. I guess it's now.
Unless it's following along, maybe it's coming later. Let me, let me just see. Maybe it's all one. Oh, I can't do anything. The one that's showing on my screen is the residential density one.
Okay, hang on. Hey, yay. I really apologize for this, folks. You stop the share here. All right, let's do that.
Okay, so while he's looking for that, so the districts that we have to apply these new requirements to are the ones that have municipal water and sewer and allow residential uses. So, we have the neighborhoods. Yep, you got it. That's it. That's the one. We have the Village Residential Commercial, the district that we just created and was approved by the Select Board. We have to make sure that that is in agreement. Jolena Court, Village Downtown. And then what we have been calling the Village Residential Neighborhood North and the Village Residential Neighborhood South. At this moment, those districts don't exist, and we'll get to that in a minute, but we want to remember that the neighborhoods north is right now part of the HDR. And the south Village Residential Neighborhood is part of the AR. So, as we make these changes, if we have not separated out those two village neighborhood districts, the changes will have to be made to the AR and the HDR. So we're going to get to that in a minute and make sure that we're committed to making those districts. So, any questions about that? And also the Village Commercial District, if it is going to allow housing. So, currently, except through the PUD process, which will also require a whole separate discussion, dwellings are not a listed use, and we have yet to determine whether our updating of the Village Commercial District is going to include residential uses in the use list. So, that's going to determine whether or not these amendments are going to apply to that district. So, anyway, you can keep that little short list of districts in mind as we go through these. Any questions so far? Okay. So, we go to what has been number one on our list. A municipality shall not require more than one parking space per dwelling unit. And we did get a legal opinion on some aspects of this statement. But the bottom line is that a residential unit, a dwelling unit in one of these districts, you cannot require more than one parking space for. Parking space, we're going to have to define exactly what we mean, and we'll give you in a minute a definition that we think applies to a year-round public parking space, so that we can have a definition in our zoning about what those words mean. So there's a couple of ways that we can approach amending our zoning to incorporate this. And they're listed as Strategy 1 and Strategy 2, and if anybody wants to think of any other strategies, that's fine, too. These are just what we've thought of. It's going to involve the parking table one way or another. And if we take out the four residential uses in the parking table, accessory use, single-family home, duplex, and multifamily dwelling, if we just take those out entirely from the parking table and call that table the Table of Commercial Parking Space Requirements, we could then, in each one of the districts of our 10 districts, we currently have 10 districts, in each one of the 10 districts, we would have to put a statement about parking. Now, there is currently in all of those districts, a statement about parking. The statement says, "See the parking table." So, what we would do is, for instance, in the Jolena Court District, we would have to redo that whole little parking section that is particular to the Jolena Court. That one, we would have to rewrite what's in there, which is different from the parking table. In our Village Residential Neighborhoods, we would need to put in a statement saying that one parking space is required in this district that is served by water and sewer for residential uses. In a district like the AR, which is not served by municipal water and sewer, we could put what we have currently in our parking table into that AR section or the HDR section. So, that would be the change. We'd change to adjust commercial parking table, and then in each one of the districts, there would be a statement about the parking requirement. So, are there any questions about that? That was, that's one strategy that you could use, and you could make then the requirement individualized to each district. The second strategy that is possible is that you could expand the parking table to have dwelling, single-family, in districts served by water and sewer, one parking space. Single-family in districts not served by water and sewer, X number of parking spaces. Right now, it's one, because we put that in the parking table. But for a duplex or a multifamily, we have one and a half spaces. So, in the district served by water and sewer, for a duplex, you would have to have the number one instead of 1.5. So that would be a different way of doing it, would be expanding rather than contracting the parking table to separate out districts served by water and sewer from districts not served by water and sewer. So, does anyone have any thoughts about either of those two things? Which you would think would be better? Keith, do you want to say anything about, from an administrative point of view, or clarity, or any other point of view which you think would work better?
From, from an administrative point of view, and from anybody who is a layperson coming to this fantastic document that we're adjusting here or revising here, Strategy 1 would be preferred from an administrative point of view, because it separates the residential uses from the commercial uses, and it makes a standalone document for the commercial parking uses. Strategy 2 works okay, but again, that's an expanding of that table, and it becomes kind of confusing after a while, at least in my experience it would. So, so basically, if we remove, from an administrative point of view, if we remove the residential uses from the parking table and place it in the individual districts that residential uses are allowed, that's one-stop shopping. And that's really what we like to see as administrators, is that things are easy for the layperson and for the person who's administrating, and especially somebody who's new. And as you know, there's quite a bit of turnovers with zoning administrators, but regardless of that, my preferred strategy is, one, I am ambivalent, we can expand the table, but if somebody else has a different idea, please come up with it. We do need, we need, we need some folks to speak up on this and give us some direction.
I had the opposite opinion of Keith until I heard him express that, and it sounds to me like, having waited through this document when I was younger, trying to do work on my own house, being able to look in the district that my house or whatever property was in and find all the information I need to know would be pretty advantageous as a property owner, and I think that also, to Keith's point, seems to make sense from an administrative standpoint. So, I think Strategy 1 seems to make sense. I don't know if that requires more modifications on our end now, but makes sense to me.
Okay. Yeah, the only thing that we might have to think about that might take up a little more time is in some of the districts that aren't served by municipal water and sewer. Do we want anything different from what we currently have in our table? And it seems like, since we haven't taken those districts up yet, like the HDR, we haven't focused on it yet. There may be other changes. So for right now, if we just took the information that's currently contained in the parking table and put it into that district as part of the package of reviewing that district, we could also review that information. So, that would work for me is, and then the new, the water and sewer districts would have to have this new information. We have, would have to be sure that this new information was in there. So, anyway. Kathleen?
I guess I just had a question, and it relates to whether there might be confusion by using a table for some of the parking by use, and then having other parking requirements in the actual section for the zoning district? Do you need to have the table? That's the thought.
Yeah, so the, I think the answer to that is, there's a number of things in the parking subsection of this document that you wouldn't want to repeat for every district. So we need a parking section to the document. Now, and the, we would make it very clear that for residential parking, see each individual district. For commercial parking, use the following table. I don't think that's going to be too confusing to people, because they would see that right there. And then the other, all the other information, like how wide the spaces are going to have to be, and all of that kind of stuff would still be able to remain in the parking section where the commercial-sized spaces were. It's with the residential uses, there's very few of them. You know, there's only four residential uses. There's a whole lot of commercial uses that have individual parking needs that you wouldn't want to put in every section, I wouldn't think. So. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. A good explanation will be very helpful within the document.
Yep. Okay, and so, did you want to read your parking space definition, your, your public parking, which doesn't apply to this sentence of this item, but it applies to the other sentence, which actually we got a lot of, it's written ambiguously, the, the next sentence of this, it does refer to public parking, so we will put in some information about public parking. We'll, we'll have a definition. Did you get a chance to write that up, Keith, or?
I did not get a chance to write that up, but I know that we have a pretty good definition from Dave on that. And we could work around that, and no, I do not have that ready right now.
Yep. Anyway, it's basically, you know, what we talked about, and with our attorney, David Rue, we talked about it being parking that is available to the public, either in a building or in a marked outdoor space that is available year-round. It can be either for a fee or not for a fee, but it has to be available to the public at some point in time, so.
And I would, I would add to that, that we do need a definition for public parking. And I think that's really the exercise here as far as expanding our definition for, it's not just public parking, there's quite a few definitions we need to expand on.
Yeah.
Folks agree that we do need a definition for public parking, you know, say aye, or, or, you know, just, just agree with it, I guess.
Does anybody have a problem with having a definition for public parking? Let's put it that way, or feel. Okay, I'm not hearing anybody, so I am taking that as agreement from people that we can have a definition of public parking, and it will be useful, and it will be in the parking section. Probably. Well, there will be a definition in the definitions, in our Section 7 definitions is where it will be, I guess, is where it will live. Okay, so does anyone have any other comments about Strategy 1 versus Strategy 2?
Just a quick question, and I think I'm just, it's just something I don't understand. I'm looking above that, it says, you know, in the, in the preamble there, "The municipality shall not require more than one parking space per dwelling unit," so that's setting a maximum of one per unit, but then we say this will require that we alter our parking table to reflect a minimum parking requirement of one space for all dwelling units. Shouldn't it be a maximum parking requirement of one space for all dwelling units?
No, this is.
I'm not getting it.
You can't require more than one space.
So it's a floor.
It's the floor. You can have more spaces. You can put more spaces. You just, in your.
I see what Chris is saying there. I think that what we're getting is like the maximum, it's the, the state's expressing a maximum minimum requirement, if that makes sense? So we can allow less spaces per unit, but we, this is the map, one space per unit on water or sewer would be the maximum you can require. You can require less. The maximum spaces you can allow is different than the maximum spaces you can require.
I think if you wanted to, you could.
Yeah, we don't necessarily need to do that.
Right. So, right now, in our ordinance, well, prior to the changes that we made during the RC discussions, two parking spaces for dwelling unit were required. They were required. You had to have two. At least two. You could have more, but this was what was required in the ordinance, two or more, basically. This is saying you can't require two spaces for each dwelling unit. You can only require one space.
Right. No, I understand that. I think I'm just confused by the wording.
Yeah, well, it is. I mean, and it's, there's a difference between what you can require and what you can actually have. So. All right. So, if there are no other comments.
I know, a quick question. Chris, since that, that does seem kind of confusing, like saying, if you got a better idea of how to word it? Because I imagine if you are pretty in tune with these things as far as people go, and it's confusing on the surface, I imagine as we start implementing, implementing this, people will be pretty confused. So I don't know, if you have a better, I don't have any better idea. I'm not very good with words, so.
I don't have anything right now, but I'll think about it and see if I can come up with something better.
Yeah. Whatever makes it more clear would be good, you know, in our, if you remember, in our Jolena Court discussion, this was a big issue. They didn't want to be required to have two parking spaces. They wanted less parking spaces. So, anyway. Okay, so my feeling is if nobody has another idea, and if people do not prefer to, Strategy 2 to Strategy 1, Keith and I could work up Strategy 1 for our next meeting and see what it looks like. So we could have some language and see in our document how it fits in. Is that acceptable to people, that we proceed ahead with that strategy? And do a mock-up, and then we will have a little more specificity. The goal here is to make some progress little by little by adding greater specificity, so, and.
So, so what, so what you would see, if you were to give us to go ahead, or myself would go ahead, would be the updated parking document. The table would be updated. I would show that, and then I would probably take out, oh, let's, let's just say HDR district in, in, in the, I guess the better would be of the residential, the village residential, and I could, I could just go ahead and remove the district or take the district and, and put in the wording for parking and show you how that would look. And then obviously, it would be repeated in all the other districts within the zoning regulation. That's really what it would come down to.
Yeah, so you would have the new districts, the residential districts we're creating, they would look one way. Jolena Court would have to be worked on a little differently, because it already has a parking requirement that is different from this, so we would have to adjust that. The Village Downtown also has a parking, a special parking arrangement, which involves no parking spaces for certain buildings, for certain lots. So that would require a little special work. And then there are the other districts where there are residential uses, but they're not on municipal water and sewer, the HDR, the AR, mobile home park. And then there are the districts that don't allow residential uses. We would not have that language. That language would not have to be there if they didn't allow residential uses. If they allow them via PUD, then we would have to have some language. Anyway, so that's what we would start producing the language that we would actually be using. So, if anyone feels that that's too fast, or this would be a good time to say that, otherwise we'll proceed ahead in that direction. All right, so I'm not hearing any more comments about that, so we will start on that, and we will also come up with a public parking definition. Okay, so we're moving on to number two on our list. And the, the writing in black that you see is the list that we looked at last time, the exact list. What's in red is what I've added for this week. So number two is, "Multi-unit dwellings with four or fewer units shall be a permitted use." And a multi-unit dwelling with four or fewer units is one that has three or four units. Because if it has two, it's a duplex. If it has one, it's a single-family or a single unit. So, we're talking about buildings with three to four units, and it will be in the list of permitted uses in any district that allows residential that is served by water and sewer. So, the first thing we need to do is we need to confirm that we are moving ahead to make these two Village Residential Neighborhoods districts, because it's a whole different. Because it's a whole different strategy if we're not going to do that. So I want to hear from people on the commission, are we in fact committed? We've done a lot of work on this already, we have seen the neighbors from these areas, we've made draft copies for these, so is there anyone who does not feel that simultaneously with this amendment work, we can do these two districts, they'll have to be done together? Else we'll have to have a different pathway.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, sounds good. All right, any other comments about that? Because then we're comfortable with just talking about the village residential neighborhoods and not the whole AR. There's a little piece of the AR we're going to have to talk about anyway, but with the HDR, we're not going to talk about the HDR at all because there's no part of the HDR that is served by municipal water and sewer, so we don't have to deal with that right now. Okay, so if the answer is yes, which I am hearing that nobody is a no, so everybody's a yes, then in the list of permitted uses, we will have to add the words dwelling with up to four dwelling units, or dwelling with three to four dwelling units. That will be in the two village residential neighborhoods, the JC and the VD districts, which already de facto do that, but it doesn't have it in the permitted list. The village residential commercial already has this language, because when we were putting that together, we knew that this was coming down the pike, so it's already in that district, that's fine. And then we'll have to think about the village commercial district, if we're going to allow residential, then we'll need to have this language there. So that's one change that we'll have to make, we just need to add this to the list of things that are permitted uses. And then we also need to adjust the features language, which right now in those districts just says single family or duplex, we'll need to add three to four unit buildings in the features. So let's see. There's also the PUD question, which we're going to have to take up as a special freestanding issue because there are some districts that might allow, like the village commercial district that seems to allow residential PUDs, but it's not really listed as a use, so this is an ambiguity or an incorrectness in our current language. Anyway, we'll have to take that up separately because it's a little more complicated, anyway, Kathleen?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about that language that says multifamily with five or more dwelling units, I, my understanding of the law is that it's five dwelling units, not five or more.
No, that's the density. The five units per acre, that number five comes from the density section. This section that we're talking about says multi-unit dwellings with four or fewer units shall be a permitted use. There's no mention of five or more units.
Is this new language, this conditional use dwelling multifamily with five or more?
Well, where are you reading this from?
Strategy 1, the third and fourth lines. No, you were there under, yes, right here.
Okay.
Strategy 1, add to the list of permitted uses proposed dwelling multifamily with up to four units.
Yep.
And add three to four unit multifamily dwellings to the features, so there's nothing about five.
But if you read down dwelling at the end of the third line, dwelling multifamily with five or more dwelling units, so is that only, which zoning districts would that apply to?
Well, in the RC district, we have the multifamily with five or more dwelling units as a conditional use.
So.
But that is not really covered by this point of Act 47.
Great, I just wanted to be sure that that was not, I mean, that that didn't apply to the new residential districts.
That is not something that we would need to put into the new residential districts.
Right.
Because of Act 47.
Right, thank you.
So that's only, would be in the RC district.
RC or the, let's see. Or the, it says in the JC.
Oh, so in the Jolena Court, right, in the JC. Yeah, so that's okay, so I see the confusion there, that would only be, I think that is also in the village RC that we put in, but I'd have to double check. Anyway, in the JC district, they already have buildings with five plus units, it's just not listed as a use, so it should be in the Jolena Court district. So that would be a correction that we're making, not because of Act 47 necessarily, but in the JC district, they don't list three and four unit buildings as a permitted use, which they should, and five plus units as a conditional use, which they should list, those should be listed in the Jolena Court district because we already have that in there, we already have those things. And we wish to allow it.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. Sorry about that, I forgot that I wrote that. Um, okay, so except for the PUD portion, does anybody have any questions or? It's really not optional that we put this in, so what we would do if, since we are committed to making these village residential neighborhood districts, we would put this language in as part of our continued progress, mocking it up what it would look like, what the language would look like in the districts that we had already formulated drafts for. And, you know, we'll obviously be putting those out there for people to look at ahead of time, but any questions or comments about that, or? Hi Alison, welcome.
Hi.
All right. Okay, so I'm not hearing any further discussion about that point.
Yeah, so this is basically a full steam ahead portion with the VRNN and VRNS. So, I mean, we're not spinning our wheels anymore, we're moving forward with it. That's what I'm getting.
Kathleen?
All right, I apologize, but the conversation does lead me to ask about, when you say full speed ahead, will there be an opportunity for neighbors to?
Oh, yes.
And I appreciate that you've got that language on the website, and that's great, but I'm hoping that before you go to hearings, there will be an opportunity for people to-
Yeah, we can certainly invite the neighborhoods in again, like we did before, to come and look at this new language and think about the new language. It's not exactly like we're going to ask them what they think about the new language. Because we have to have the new language. So, but definitely the way it looks in the document and to hear people talk about it and to maybe mock up some scenarios of what it might look like, that kind of thing, we will do that. The full speed ahead part that Keith is referring to is that we wanted to make sure that everybody on the commission was still committed to making these neighborhoods, so that we can add the language just to these neighborhoods and not to the neighborhoods that they have been taken out of, so.
Right, and when the conversations happened with the neighborhoods previously, this was a very different set of changes and and people probably are not aware about this, so it's just, I think it's great that you will take the time to-
I would echo or just state that we're extremely cognizant of that. And, you know, the more input we get and the more output that our constituents get, the better. I mean, I think that goes without saying, and there's a pathway that the statute puts us on also, you know, this has given me the green light to start that. And that's my full speed ahead Kathleen, that's what that means, and it's like, I've been waiting, champing at the bit to get the village residential neighborhood north and south going, and here we are, and fantastic.
Yeah, because we were pretty close before, you know, we felt we were fairly close, and then this whole new monkey wrench was thrown into the works of Act 47, so, yeah, it's a new, a new part of the curve here. Okay, so everybody's good with that? It looks like. So we'll move on to our point number three, which is bylaws shall establish lot and building dimensional standards that allow five or more dwelling units per acre for each allowed residential use. And the allowed residential uses are multifamily, three to four, duplexes, single family with or without an ADU that comes along with the single family, those are the residential uses. So we need to understand what we're talking about with density. Because it's confusing, I think it's very confusing. What counts as density, does an ADU, is that like part of density, or, you know, is a duplex one unit or two units? When you're given this mandate that you have to allow for five units per acre, what exactly do you have to allow? So we worked up a density section, we feel we're going to need, you know, it hasn't been used much in our zoning ordinance, so it's pretty new for us. We kind of started it with Jolena Court, which is a multi-unit building, and density is really, the concept was written around multi-unit buildings, that's what it's for, is to allow the density of multiple units in a single building. So we need to have a little density section, we need to have a density definition, and so this is what Keith and I have been working on, is to try to put something together that we can have as a section that tells us exactly what counts for density. So let's look, yeah, go ahead. Density document.
Yeah, I'm going to bring up the density document, so bear with, because I am a Luddite. So everybody see that?
I got it.
Yep. Let me expand this, there you go.
Okay, so, and the the title of this section, which we will find a home for, probably in Section 6, possibly in Section 4, but maybe in Section 6, is residential density. Because density only applies to residential, residential, the residential uses, that's what we're defining it as, a term that applies to residential. So, um, we need to separate it out from dimensional standards. And what we did, which was not perfectly well thought out, I guess, I would say, in the RC districts, density is listed in the dimensional standard section of each of those RC districts. Density is not a dimensional standard, and throughout Act 47, they talk about dimensional standards, and we want to make sure that we're not thinking about density as a dimensional standard. So in any district that mentions density, first of all, we need to take it out and make it a separate subsection. Dimensional standards is one section, residential density, which is where this number of five is going to go, will be a separate section, so that's the first point. So, and it's going to be, you know, this is another case where we could put it in each district, or we could also have a section that applies to all districts that allow residential uses. And we're probably going to have to have both. Because in the residential districts that are served by water and sewer, it's going to have to be this number of five units per acre. Why they made it five is a weird kind of number, it's not four, but anyway, it's five. So in the districts like the AR that are not served by water and sewer, we can have any other number that we want, we haven't talked about that, what we want the density to be. So then, in the freestanding section about density, we're going to make these following points. First of all, it's designed to apply either principally or only to multi-unit housing. And we'll get in a minute, as we go down this list of A, B, C, D, to talking about which one of those principally or only it is, but that's the concept. Secondly, B, we will want to say density shall be expressed as a maximum number of dwelling units per acre of land in a parcel. If the amount of land required for one dwelling unit is one acre or more, this is what we came up with with RevI when we started putting down density in the amount of square feet that a dwelling is going to require. So in the planning world, you can talk about density either as per acre or as each unit needs so many square feet, and what RevI had come to the conclusion about, that we put into our zoning, was that if it's small, if the number of dwelling units is going to be multiples in an acre, then you use this square footage notation. If it's going to be one acre or more, like if we keep in the AR that the minimum lot size is one acre and the density is one unit per acre, we can still use the language of acre. If the density is going to be two units per acre, that's technically less than an acre, so you would put it as 22,000 square feet, or 20,000 square feet, or whatever. So that's just explaining how we're going to explain it. Then we get to the, to me is the most confusing and tricky part of it is in all density calculations under these regulations, each of the following shall count only as one dwelling unit. A single family dwelling counts as one. A single family dwelling with an ADU counts as one, and a duplex counts as one. Now, the reason that it's written like that is because let's say you have one acre zoning, and your density is one unit per one acre. If it's a single family home, you're required to allow an ADU. Already then, you have two units per acre, and you have stated that your density is one unit per acre, so this is a problem. It's a conflict. If you have that situation with one unit, one acre, and that's your density, and you put a duplex, which you are required to allow any place that you can put a single family home, you must be able to have a duplex. That's already two- That's already to, your density has been doubled. Even though still stated that it's only one unit, right?
Very ambiguous.
It's very ambiguous. So the point is here to make up a strategy that is not ambiguous. And the only two things that we could think of to do that were either just counting your single family home and your ADU as one unit. So that you could still have one unit density. Or you could just say that single family homes and ADUs and duplexes are exempt from density. So that your density number doesn't really apply to those. You're, it's only being used for multi-unit buildings. So we're open to another way of doing it if somebody can think of one that resolves that conflict. And it seems to arise because these are two kind of different systems that have been meshed together, a density system and the fact that you're required to have a duplex wherever you have a single family home, you're required to allow that if people want it. So that automatically gives you a problem with stating a density. Is that sort of clear?
Um, I, it's tough for sure. Um. My first stumbling block is uh, where it talks about the following shall count as one dwelling unit. But this is only on, this is not on multi-unit housing. Cause I, I guess where I'm going.
No, because you, you come down, you come down to, to D and it says for multi-unit dwellings, each dwelling unit shall count as one unit. So it's just a special arrangement that we have made. We have to make some kind of special arrangement that allows those two conflicting principles to live together. So these are two special arrangements, even though it seems like it doesn't make sense. It's the only way you can allow them to live together. Mark, go ahead, for, talk more.
No, that was it really is. I ju, I really wanna make sure that we're, it's, it's clear that um, a multi-unit property can't have accessory dwelling units.
Well, as we go down through this, those points are all made. Even a duplex can't have an ADU. Two, you know, if but the fact that you have a single family home, it can either be with or without an ADU, it's still counting as one unit. But everything else has to, you have to add the units.
And, and this is specific to density calculations. So I, I don't wanna muddy it up any, any more than it, than it already is, but it is special to single family dwellings and, and no other uh, no, nothing else. I mean, if, if you're if, if you allow a single family dwelling, you must allow that single family dwelling to have an ADU. It's a permitted use. And the same goes for if you have a single family dwelling, you must allow a duplex. That is a permitted use. So we go ahead and we say in these density calculations, it doesn't matter. Because if, if you have a single family dwelling, you can, you have the right to have two dwelling units. And that's basically what we're saying here in the density calculation. It, it kinda streamlines it down and what we're doing is we're amalgamating uh, forty-seven and I believe one seventy-nine, uh, which is the ADU uh, statute. Which we, which has been hanging out in the air for the last three years, four years.
So um, um, when you're talking about a, an ADU, basically for tax purposes, for ownership person, purposes, you're talking about having a single owner, right? Who happens to have an accessory dwelling unit on that property, but it's really one home. It's not rated as two homes. Et cetera. With duplexes theoretically, we can allow separate ownership and then it's more like a condo unit, right? Am I understanding that right?
Yes, that's correct. It can be in separate ownership.
But not, but as soon as, yeah, okay.
Right, and an ADU cannot.
An ADU has to be part of the property of, or ownership of the same owner.
Right, they can rent it out or whatever they wanna do, but one of those units must be occupied by the owner at this point in time.
Right.
And this is why we wanted to allow two residential structures on a lot because it's for things that didn't qualify as an ADU situation or as a duplex. Because those are very specific animals. Each one of those is got its own rules and its own standards and so forth. And the only time that you're calling them one unit is for density calculations. Because we have to make a special arrangement somehow. And that's one possibility of the special arrangement. The other one is just saying we are exempting them from density calculations. But if you can allow your mind to get over the cognitive dissonance of calling it one dwelling unit, even though there really do dwelling units, it seems to work. Kathleen.
Uh, so I did, I did look at the state's guidance document and uh, I, I'm pretty sure if you look at A, your A where you say the option saying only applying it to multi-family housing, I, I'm pretty sure that the state sees it as a single family. The density involves single family duplex and I actually don't know about a single family with an accessory dwelling unit, but uh, so I, I don't see how you could apply it to only multi-family housing. Because these are, you know, if you have five, whether you have two duplexes and a single family or you have five multi-family units, that's still a density of five units per acre. So I, uh, unless I'm really missing the boat, I, I don't see how you would should exempt single family homes, duplexes and ADUs from density requirements because then you're you're ex, well exceeding potentially what the uh, law standards uh, specify.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, the or only definitely re- applied to the exempting situation and you know, that is something that we haven't had. This whole thing is something we haven't had a legal opinion about. So, you know, I mean, I like the red choice too, myself, the one that doesn't exempt them, but that would be another kind exempting. It would be if it was legal and it worked, it would be another kind of special arrangement. So is, this is for discussion purposes, which we're having, which is good. You know, you're bringing up some good points. So um, it all will have to be run by legal to see.
Why, why do you think it doesn't, why do you think these requirements don't apply to single family or duplexes? They certainly are units on a, a parcel.
Yep. Well, the only reason is because it comes, it brings you into contact, conflict with your, your density requirement. It can. If you have an actual density number and you have to allow a duplex where there's a single family home, as in my example. If you have density of one residential unit per acre and you have an acre and you have a single family home and you make it into a duplex, then you're in conflict with your density number.
But, but in terms of the law, a duplex is two, appears to be two units. That's what the guidance documents say.
Yes, it, it has to be two units, but if you're going to have a density number, what if you have a density number of two units per acre and you have two single family homes and you make them each into a duplex, you can double it. You're already in conflict with your density number. If you're required to allow a duplex wherever there's a single family home.
But right now there, you, you don't allow two single family dwellings on a on a parcel. So I guess.
Well, we do in the re, in the village residential district, cause we put it in there. And the gateway residential commercial district, we allow two structures.
Okay.
But that structure, that situation could come up with even one. You know what I mean? It's just that this duplex ADU situation allows you to double your number. So whatever your density number is, you could double it through these means. Which is then going to obviate your number that you've made.
Well, I think there are probably some ways to address that without undercutting the, the law.
I think we could um, we could address that for future lots, right? By setting the minimum lot size to an amount that would be required for two units. So minimum lot size that would permit two units would also or that would permit one single family dwelling would also be the amount of land that would allow two units. So if we set our minimum lot size to two fifths of an acre, that would solve that going forward. But there's a lot of lots that exist that are well smaller than that, that will be permitted duplexes. That, you know, obviously we can't go back and change that.
Well, and in the districts that allow, that are served by water and sewer, that allow residential uses, Act forty-seven is requiring us to have this density number. So it's setting us up for violating that by the other restrictions that allow you to have a duplex. So that's the issue is that these two systems don't really mesh with each other and they're both designed to kind of address the same problem. To allow more housing, basically. And originally they started by saying, well, whenever you have a single family home, you can have a duplex. We didn't have any density numbers, so it didn't matter because you weren't violating your density number, your density requirement. If you are now also required to have a density number, you may have a conflict. Anyway, you know, we will undoubtedly have to have more guidance on this. So we will be working with it over time. I just thought we ought to introduce this density concept while we're thinking about this issue. This number three is not something we're gonna be able to resolve over time. I mean, tonight, we'll have to have more, probably more guidance about it. Or think about it, or think up some other strategies. There are some other points in here in density that you could also be thinking about. Um. Basically it's saying for multi-unit buildings, each dwelling unit is one. That duplex thing is a special case. We're done with that. We're on to multi-units now. Each unit is a unit. Um. If you have this allowance that we have made for two structures, two residential structures on the same lot, if they are single family homes, each one of them can have an ADU, but each one of those counts as a single dwelling unit, each one of those two family homes, uh, those one family homes. Or if they're turned into duplex, they still, each one is one. Or if they add ADUs, each one is one, even though we have now added more, but technically we haven't violated our density number.
Wait, huh?
So a duplex cannot have an ADU, just keep that in mind.
Right, a duplex can't have an ADU.
So Virginia, if we had two single family homes and they were to have two ADUs, wouldn't that require separate ownership, like some kind of some kind of ownership agreement if they were on one lot? Is that?
Well, each.
Like one, one owner couldn't own each single family, couldn't, one owner couldn't own two single family homes in a lot and have ADUs because the ADU, or the ADU or the single family would need to be owned by the, lived in by the owner or whatever, right? So that limitation would.
Yeah, so I guess that's true. If you have two single family homes owned by the same owner on the lot, you can only have one ADU.
If the owner lives there. If they don't live there, then you can't zero.
Two single family homes is basically a duplex.
Exactly. It's a duplex without connection.
And so, but a, but duplexes can't have ADU. You have two houses on the same lot, neither one of them, even if the owner lives on it can, can create an ADU, right?
Well, two houses aren't really a duplex.
Well.
The point of putting, putting that into the RC districts that you could have two residential structures on a lot was to allow for situations where A, either you wanted to maybe have a duplex, but you didn't wanna join it together. Or B, where you wanted to have an ADU type situation, but you didn't want to have to have a relative live in it. So that was the point, was to allow for an additional unit, which was neither a, an ADU nor a duplex. But it amounted to the same kind of idea in that you had two families now living on this property instead of one.
On a duplex.
Yeah.
In a duplex or in two structures that were freestanding.
Same way in that neither one of them can have an ADU.
Well, I don't think you would be able to say that, that neither one could have an ADU. Cause it's not really a duplex. It's really two residential structures.
But we can't apply all the ADU requirements to them so that uh, the ownership slash occupancy, ownership occupancy and dimensional standards would still apply to the ADUs. Correct? Okay.
Yeah, so if you have two structures, two single family homes on a single lot and they're in different ownership, why couldn't each one have an ADU? As long as the ADU A that belonged to single family home, A carried out the correct standards for an ADU, like it was, you know, a relative, the owner lived in one or the other. Pardon me?
Have a quadplex, not a duplex. Well, they wouldn't be connected. Well, um.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be connected and they also couldn't be owned by the same person. So it wouldn't there'd have to be at least two distinct owners to get four units on that.
Presumably.
Four dwelling units, not four units for the calculation.
Presumably if you had two single family homes owned by a single owner, you could have one ADU.
So then, then the homeowner would have, the single owner would have three units on his properties, is what you're saying? Under that scenario? They'd in essence have.
Yes, I think so.
They, they would have an ADU, maybe the same size as their home and they'd have an ADU that would be you know, subserving.
Seventy-five percent, yes.
I would think so. I don't know. Keith, what do you think about that?
I'd have to have that scenario put before me, you know, uh. It, it's, it's not something I'm gonna make a determination on, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find to have that defined before we put anything in, in writing.
Yeah, well, we're definitely gonna have to work on this more.
Just, just throwing it out there.
But the, the fact is that we are going to have to have some kind of special arrangement to have density and to have those other laws all apply in the same zoning ordinance. So. To have density and to have those other laws all apply in the same zoning ordinance, so.
So let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Just because it's a duplex. Why do we say a du? The duplex. Has to be able to be put on the same. Dimensions as. That. A regular house. And here's where I'm I'm thinking about this. I'm thinking like, okay, so if you're saying we have to go down to point two. Acres. So what you're telling me is that on point two acres, now this is ridiculous because I know. This kind of. Exemplifies the circumstance. That. If you put two houses on point two acres. And then. One or both of them are allowed to have ADUs because maybe they're separate owners. You now have four units on four dwellings on point two acres. And. And the the regulations, Act forty seven. Simply says that we need to have a density of. One dwelling unit per point two acres. It's not saying you have to go down to a point two acre lots of this. It's saying a housing development. Has to be. No more than point two acre density, but it's not saying the lot size has to go down to point two acres. So if a homeowner had. If we have one dwelling unit, just for argument's sake, we say one dwelling unit is allowed to point two acres. Which is the law that we have to adhere to.
Right.
But we we have the minimum lot size. Point four acres. We're allowing a duplex, then you know, there then they can put in a duplex, but. But if if we have a a dwelling unit per point two acres. And there's a lot. That's only point three acres big. Then you can't put half a unit on it, so. Do you round up or do you round down? Do you say, oh, listen, it's not. You know, you're not at a dwelling unit per point two acres there, so you can't put a second unit on that point three acre lot.
Dimensionally, you might not be able to do that.
So we could we could theoretically. Put the lots at. Point four acres.
It depends on how about that, yeah, I mean.
Right? Okay, I'm just I'm just throwing these ideas out to the stew.
So how would that play out Keith on a existing lots? That have, you know, a point, there's a bunch of like point one five to point two acre lots.
Yep.
That are allowed a single family. No matter what, they're allowed a duplex. Under this law, right? So no new law could be created that could be smaller than point four. But by the law, if we allow a single family, we can either tell those people they can't have a single family at all. Or we can say you can have a single family in a duplex. We can't say just a single family.
And a single family with an ADU.
I don't, I'm not sure.
Have a single family with an ADU.
The law says we have to allow duplexes anywhere where there is single family zoning. The law doesn't say we have.
I don't think it, I don't think it does say that. It doesn't say we allow it. We doesn't say we have to allow it anywhere there's a single family zoning. It says we have to allow it. Anywhere there is allowed a single family, which is a.
In the district.
Small nuance. But it doesn't say in the district. It says any anywhere we allow. Single family.
We allow.
A single family dwelling.
And 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 in a zoning district, we have to allow duplexes to be built. But is that really saying?
I don't think that's what it says, though. I don't think it's, I don't think it's referring when it says, it doesn't say anywhere we allow a single family. Units. It says anywhere we allow a single family unit, we shall allow a duplex. So it's saying each any lot that is allowed a single family unit shall be allowed a duplex. It doesn't say any lot that any area. Yeah, this is a little bit more specific than just the zoning district. It's referring to the actual lots for any. Any specific place that allows a single family shall allow a duplex.
You cannot be restricted, correct?
Yep.
You can't.
Yeah, they definitely, they definitely.
Allow them wherever single family homes are allowed. But if. If single family homes aren't allowed on. Point one five acres, then you can't put a duplex on point one five acres, nor if you do have. On a point one five acre, you can't put a duplex, make a duplex out of it.
Yeah, you can't. Absolutely.
So this is Linda Donovan. Um, I just have, it's interesting. Um, Bill and I just purchased um. Well, it's been over a year now. East Hill. There was a tax sale. And it is a very small lot. And we were told that we could put. A duplex on that.
Because wherever there's a grandfathered, I mean, that's a grandfathered. Single family home on that lot.
Well, the other thing is it is grandfathered in. Right, the other thing is is that I. Have heard through the grapevine, which um I haven't dug into it yet. But that because it's a Christmas Tree Hill Association. The association will not allow a duplex. Anyone heard of, anyone heard of this one?
Yeah, that's not a zoning issue and the town wouldn't wouldn't be party to that, so. You know, what they do in their subdivision is up to them. But if there's a pre-existing lot that is, let's say, point one five acres and it's pre-existing legal con- non-conforming lot. And you and and in that district, you are allowed to build a single family dwelling. You by right can build a duplex. It'll be a narrow duplex. It'll be a tall duplex. I don't know how.
Right.
Have to go up.
How it'll work.
Right. Okay, interesting.
I'd like to hear David's interpretation of that.
Yeah, so we'll we'll be talking. More about this topic. There are a few other things that we would have to put in here if we were having a whole density. Section. One is is a group home. Is that one unit? Group home is is very special thing too. I am suggesting it is also one dwelling unit. Supporting housing. Well, that's something sort of different or retirement. Community. And for that. For discussion purposes, I put eight units, which is like what a group home has. That's the number of residents. So. We would need a retirement home if we wanted to. Include that in density, or we could exclude it from density if we thought that was appropriate. Um, we'd need a number there. Um, emergency shelters, hotels, et cetera, aren't subject to density. That seems to make sense. And then. Single family dwellings. Shall be allowed. Accessory dwelling units. Duplexes shall not be permitted accessory dwelling units.
And that's just a clarifying statement, so.
That's just the educational or clarifying. It just is. Making it clear to everyone. These questions that we keep asking of ourselves.
And 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 I would offer that if 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 you want to throw scenarios at me one by one, that's fine. I mean, we we can. We can go down that that path. I have no problem with that.
Let me, let me ask you this then, uh. When it comes to zoning regulations. And non-conforming laws. You're not allowed to. Accentuate or uh. Expand the non-conformance. So if you're, if you've, if you've got a house and it's got a setback of uh. Five feet and the zoning is ten feet, you can't put an addition on and move it towards two feet.
That's correct.
Because you're accentuating the 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 non-conformity. So if you have a lot. Density of point two acres per dwelling. You can't allow. And it's on a point one five acre. You can't accentuate. Or I mean, now I know that's a wrong word, excuse me, but you uh you can exacerbate the non-conformity. So you're already too dense for the district. For your dwelling unit zoning. You can't then add another unit and accentuate. That non-conformance.
Well, as long as you don't, if if you can keep, if you don't expand the non-conformity. And or if you do keep within the d- density. Not density, the dimensional. Requirements. You can build. But I understand where you come from. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Yeah, you are by nature, you're you're restricted. There's no doubt about that, Mark.
So how can you expand that by then turning a single family home into a duplex?
You can't expand it. The the only way you can expand it is if you don't bust the dimensional requirements.
It's it's not a physical. Limitation, the density limitation.
Well.
Size of law and and you're allowing. Further. Excedence of that non-conformity.
But does non-conformity, does it apply to density? This is where you have, you know, density is different.
You know, I there I get, I'm throwing these out here so we have questions and you guys can. And talk to David, put it out there, but I it it seems to me that a non-conformity can't be. Exacerbated.
Well, it depends whether density comes under non, non-conformity or not. I mean, it may or it may not. It depends on the. On the definitions. It's a, it's a non-conforming structure, and I think non-conforming structures just relate to the dimensional, like the setbacks or. The dimensional standard.
Same way, you're not supposed to have a gas station in a in a zoning district. It's also a use.
Well, it's a non-conforming use.
As a gas station.
So you have two categories of things, non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures.
Yep.
Well, it's clearly not a non-conforming use because it's a residential use and you already have a residential use. It's not a non-conforming use. And it's not a non-conforming structure if it. Abides by the setbacks, the lock coverage and the other dimensional standards. So density doesn't make it non-conforming. As I read it.
Sure.
I would agree. But. You know, it's scenarios has has their own particular intricacies. So.
So we could theoretically. Still zone. Point three acre lots. But. If there were. That law couldn't be. You could put another house on that law. And. But you wouldn't be able to. If it wasn't. Point four acres. If it was point three acres, you couldn't put two separate homes. On a lot because the the you would then. Exceed your density.
Yes, that's.
And that's because that is written into the two structures on a lot section. It says it has to agree with the density. And the dimensional standards. It's written in there that it has to go along with the density, but that's only specific to that. Thing that we made up about putting two structures. On a lot. So that's only related to that.
This sounds, sounds like a. Aside from pre-existing lots, which there are many of, and ADUs, I mean, it's pretty tough to. It would be tough to use the. Two separate structures to abuse that outside of the ADU. Thing which has pretty serious constraints on it as far as occupancy and. Um, ownership. But there's a lot of. There's many pre-existing lots that could have a duplex that would theoretically not. Not conform to our density of point two acres is that.
Exist.
Sorry, I'm so weeding, so so weeding through this, as you can tell, so.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Conversation.
Has to have a lot of weeding going on, you know, and as far as. Meeting the dimensional requirements, the setbacks, you can always go up. You know, you can put a second floor on, which isn't going to increase the footprint. It's not going to interfere with the setbacks or the lock coverage. So, you know, that's an option. You can, you certainly will have to. Um, abide by the dimensional standards, but that doesn't mean you can't put that other unit on. You can either, you know, you can. Make it part of your house even, the existing footprint. And then that would be a duplex or a house with an ADU, one or the other. Anyway, I think maybe.
Strikes me that the dimensional requirements are going to become more and more important then because. The amount of units is. Obviously. Impacts the feel of the community, but. Seems like there's only so much we can do about that. I mean, uh. A, a. For some reason, if it was possible, a twelve thousand square foot house on Baker Street, seems like it would have. Just as outsized the impact on the community as. A three unit. Three units on point five acres or whatever it is. So I don't think that the dimensional standards seem to be the most critical to me.
I mean, it it is a governor. It definitely is a governor, so to speak.
And you know, it's going to be a factor if you want to put two structures on a small lot, two single family homes, they're all going to have to have. Parking there, you know, I mean.
Setbacks.
Lock coverage is gonna be a question. Are you, can you get this, these in? They're gonna either have to be really small or, you know. Your one car space or your driveway is gonna have to be small or.
Um. To 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 sort of build on this, um. If you have a lot, okay, say we say we keep the districts the way they are, whatever it is, point three acres, I think it is, maybe let's just say that. So point three acres. You got a house. Um, and we keep the lot size at point three acres, but then somebody buys. Point acre, point eight acre lot. That point acre lot, they could put in a four unit. Dwelling unit on point fo- on point eight acres. But they couldn't do that on point seven.
They could put three point five.
Right, so they they're limited by that. In the same sen- I would see that as the same senses. Two different buildings, but maybe not. Okay, alright, I'm.
I see your holdup on that, Mark. It is, it is tricky. I don't, yeah, I don't know. It's, it's a tough one.
Yeah, try to administer this.
Yeah.
No, I'm I'm good where I'm at, Keith. That's all.
I mean, it's. You know, it's because there's this conflict in general between density and these requirements that you have to have a duplex. And an ADU where you have a single family home. That's what makes it difficult is because occasionally those things come into contact. Conflict with each other. So the goal was to try to figure out this puzzle. Of how to make them not come into conflict, not be able to come into. Conflict with each other by the way we define things or describe things or whatever. So anyway, people can work on that in their spare time. Um, I think we need to. Probably move on to our next agenda item right now. We will. Say we stopped at number three, which we. Got into. Um. You can look over. Four and five. At your leisure and we'll take those up next time. And maybe you will have some more thoughts about number three, everybody, right? And Adam, we're counting on you for thinking about number four and. The fire.
So much thought into that prior to that to today. I'll try to remember.
Yeah, try to remember or make some notes or something, so thank you. But I think we need to move on to our next agenda item, which is number six. And um, maybe Keith, you could introduce this item by telling us about your conversation with the Spences.
Yeah, so I had a had a conversation with the Spencers, um, Spencers, um, who owned two of the properties on um. Our our area here that were Rogers Lane and they are not interested in. Uh, converting this district to HDR. Um, because they want to keep the use of specifically a um, a a construction yard. Um, they they also want to have the the ability to 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 utilize their property as it is allowed at this current time. So now, um, they're not going to come off that. That's and that's their right. That's that's all good. Now we have to figure out. And how do we want to proceed with that knowledge? And uh, it was, it was, it was a great conversation with them, you know, but you know, they're they're protecting their interests and and it is what it is. Uh, but we're gonna have to come off what we were proposing to do. Um, and uh, we now need to discuss a different strategy to that.
So to that end, in the memo. We listed a few possible strategies and if anyone can think of any other ones, that's fine too. The possible strategies being. We could just allow residential uses in the IC district. And added them to all the other uses that are in the IC district. So that's possible. The second possible strategy is to. Move the five lots that we have been looking at. Moving into HDR, moving them into the commercial district, which is where. Uh, the Lucky Spot is and which is where Milton Cat is and Patterson and. Those are in the C district, which actually has more commercial uses than the IC district. Um, so we could leave. A little piece of the IC district, which is the J Hudson's lot, which would be the only thing that would remain as an IC in that part of the IC. District. And we could move these five lots into. The commercial district and allow residential uses in the commercial district. That would be another possibility. Another possibility. Pardon me?
Properties on Rogers Lane?
Where are the five properties?
No, the Spence properties.
Oh, where is the Spence properties? It's down towards the end. There are two of them. And are they separated by one other owner property, Keith?
They are separated, yes.
Yeah, I think it's the last one on Rogers Lane and then the. Third to the last one on Rogers Lane, I believe. Properties. Um, okay. We could put those five. Lots into it, their own district and call it an RC district, like tentatively the exit eleven RC district. And have some residential uses and some commercial uses. Which would be kind of similar to just moving it into the commercial district.
We could look at that what we are already? Isn't that what we are already? We are a mix already.
Technically, you're not an RC district.
But we're living as if we are, so why wouldn't it move forward to just being that way? What is the reasons why it would not?
Technically, it's a nonconforming law. Use. But the house was there before this changed. So it's it was it's a grandfathered in.
So my whole land should be grandfathered in. Right?
Yeah, but then you're you're talking about a subdivision. Now, if you wanted to put two separate houses on there. I don't know if we can allow that on the same property.
It's not in that district.
Been told, yeah, I was gonna say, we've been told that we can't, but I mean, I just. This becomes. More of a political issue, I guess, but it doesn't make much sense. I'm surrounded by houses. I have one to the left of me. I have one behind me. I have one down the street from me and then I have a hundred and I don't know, what is it, a hundred and sixty? And I could throw, I could throw a ball three times and hit some of my neighbors over in Riverview. So I'm a little baffled and I'm a little irritated at the fact that we are not allowed to do. Something with our land when the town of Richmond already is looking for housing. And we're willing to open it up. And allow for some housing. We're right next to the interstate. Everybody talks about the park and ride and how great it is and it's next to the interstate. We are right next to the interstate. What better place to be? Nobody industrial is going to want to climb that in the back. They're just not. So.
I think we're we're all in agreement with you. Where it uh, meets the requirements and also doesn't, you know, take something away from the neighbors. So I think we're. You know, basically all. In agreement with you, but just trying to make, um. You know, obviously creating a nonconforming, we obviously created nonconforming lots, you know, we. Uh, at some time ago when the zoning changed and your lots became quote unquote nonconforming. And we're just trying not to do that again to uh, maybe a different lot or a different use. So. Um, we're kind of waiting for all that. So I think that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yep, so we're kind of looking to determine the best strategy for doing that, you know, what is it that we can change to make this able to happen?
Okay. And how long would something like that take?
I mean, we've had this question before and and it it takes a while. There's a process we have to go through and and we started going down a process. That process. Hit a speed bump, um, and now we need to not necessarily go back to to square one. Because we all are are in agreement where we want to get to here. It's about how do we want to get to where we need to go? We are, we are locked up, not locked up, but we we are empathetic to your plight and we are trying to get you to where you need to go.
Okay.
Okay, so those were three possible strategies that look. Similar to each other. I think. At this point. We can also think about if we're going to. Put residential uses into either the IC district. Or the C district. Or make a special little RC district. We ought to look. Because it's rational to look. At what the difference is amongst those districts there, which is not much. None of them right now allow for residential. But there's not much difference between the C and the IC, believe me. The only other strategy that's sort of different is looking at the PUD. Section of our zoning. Which. In the PUD section, it says. That you can have a residential. PUD. In the IC district and a residential PUD can be one lot or more than one lot, so one lot could. You know, you could have a PUD. But supposedly it only allows the uses that are listed in the use list for the district. So that's a conflict between what the PUD section says, which says you can have a residential P PUD. In this district and the fact that residential uses aren't actually listed in the use list for the district, so. You know, maybe. That conflict between those two. Needs to be resolved anyway, one way or the other, even without this situation. It needs to be resolved because it is not correct the way it is. But if we allowed for, um. A PUD to add additional uses that are not in the use list. You know, you could rewrite your PUD section that said. You can have any size of buildings, any number of owners, and you can have any uses that are not on the use list. You know, then you could make the Donovan lot into a PUD and do anything you want with it, subdivide it, not subdivide it. Put multiple structures on it. Have multiple uses. So that's. Sort of the only strategy that we could think of that wasn't related to. Adding those uses into a district. I don't know if anybody has any comments, I mean. As far as I'm concerned, just. Adding them to one commercial. And industrial, commercial district, just making all of those properties in that area a commercial district and adding residential uses. Makes sense to me, but. And there are no industrial uses listed, real industrial uses listed for that district. There are no industrial uses there. You would have to be. Mean. To put a real industrial use there next to that mobile home park and the other residences. So hanging on to a romanticized concept that we're going to have an industrial district in Richmond doesn't seem. That useful to me. I know.
We are, we are just sandwiched in here. It's why I don't understand why it's been such an issue for so many years. Because we've, we've talked about this before. And I, you know, it was, there was somebody who. When Bill first owned the property, who walked up into our backwoods. He thought he owned that portion and he started clearing the land to build a house. And this was, this was almost. Hmm, close to eighteen nineteen years ago. He now lives in Richmond still and we still joke about it, but he was. He had made his way right up through that trail on the side and. We have a, we have a big sunny spot right up on the back. But I still, I'm, I guess I'm just still baffled because we are. We're just surrounded by neighbors and not just. Hutchins, which he's probably one of the best neighbors you could have. So.
And his his current use is a commercial use. It's not really an industrial use. It's a commercial use, so.
I guess my question earlier was. You know, ballparking, what is, is this gonna take a year or two to change? Is this gonna take six months to change just? Figuratively, an idea of what this is because, I mean. The kids are looking at wanting to do something back there and we're just twiddling our thumbs, wondering. You know, at what point that we can push the start button and start looking at this. And I'm wondering just what are we looking at, months or years? And I have no clue with what you guys, you know, what you're up against and how it is to change something. But I would love to have some sort of an idea.
Well, I think in our discussions, especially um, our candid discussions with Zach and Michelle, um, I told them to hold on and it could potentially take a year. We don't want it to take here. We want, we, if the moon and stars align. Um, we could, we could potentially get this done in four months. But there's a process.
Can can they have, could they have an ADU? Just to get them onto the land? You could put an ADU up there with your single family home and. Then make it bigger later and subdivide it later?
That's kind of expensive, wouldn't you think?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Right.
We we had that discussion, Michelle and I had that discussion also, Zach and Michelle and I.
Well, I had that, yeah, I had that discussion too, to build and. And then make sure that your builder has the side of the wall made a certain way so that you can just keep going once you're. You know, once you're there, but you know, that's not really the direction. It'd be nice to actually build a home and start living there. You know, they're married, they're. Yeah, new newly married couple and so.
And they have two dogs. Gotta have space for dogs, man. Those are big dogs too.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, planning commissioners, do you have any thoughts about this? Fifteen minutes that we can try to make some progress.
So is it that we just continue to come to meetings every two weeks and just. Brainstorm it or where do we bring this next? Is it the meetings that are where everybody has to agree? Is it? Something that we have to do within the state and permitting or?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yep, so so what what I'm looking for tonight, and this is to you and and to the commission is is direction. How how do we want to proceed? Because we ran into a roadblock. I mean, uh, we certainly were not twiddling our thumbs. We definitely, I know you guys are because you're waiting on us. I get that. Um, but but you know, we we, I just need direction uh, from the commission at this point in time.
Okay, so now, so it's not you, obviously, but so the commission, what do you do when you, once you agree upon it? If you do. Do you go to the state to change this? What's what's the next?
So wha- what happens is we decide what we want to do. Let's say, for instance, we decided we wanted to just add residential uses to the IC district. We. Write this up as an amendment to the zoning. We have a public hearing about it. Take input from the neighbors and anybody else who might want to be concerned about this. And then the planning commission. Adopts it if we're all in agreement that this is what we want still after the public hearing. And then we forward it to the select board and the select board has a public hearing. And we generally aim to try to resolve all the issues at the planning commission level. So that when it goes to the select board, there's not a lot of controversy about it. So what we need to do is we need to decide what strategy we wish to pursue here. And write up. Proposed amendments and set up a warned public hearing. We have to write a bylaw report for the state saying why we're doing this and if it affects any. Uh, public institutions and this, you know, a couple of questions you have to answer. So the work has to be done here at the planning commission level. The planning commission has to come together on making a decision about what we would like to do here.
All right, let's get that decision. That'll be nice.
Yes, so that's what we need and. I think. What? We probably will need to do. Is. Poll each individual commissioner. As to where they would like to go with this. Maybe at our next meeting. So that we can have people, you know, I mean, it's hard for all of us to think about this. I understand that. And to make a decision thinking of the future of Richmond and how, you know. What is the right thing to do? Besides you, your needs, you know, we want to accommodate your needs and your children's needs. What about as a general planning policy, you know, those kinds of things, so. But we will all need to come to some kind of agreement about it. And until that happens, we just have to keep meeting on it and keep talking about it. So, you know, I would love to hear right now if any commissioners have any. Concept of where they would like to go with it. If anybody is willing to step out there and. Or what, what would help us decide, you know, I mean, commissioners, is what information is it that would make it? Make it easy, easier to make this decision? Is there something that we need to know? Is there? Do we want to have another field trip out there? We had the one field trip. You know, what is it that is going to help us make this decision? Besides the persuasive input from the Donavons and the Beals? Anybody have any thoughts about that? What would, what would help? I have put together lists. Previously and sent them to everybody about the different uses, for instance, between the commercial and the IC just if that makes a difference. The commercial district has many more uses than the IC district. Otherwise, they're all the same. The uses in the commercial district like Milton Cat are really and Patterson Fuel and Blue Flame Gas, those. Are very similar to the Jay Hudson's uses. If it were an RC district, it would be a little tiny RC district. Yeah, Mark.
Did I raise my hand?
Oh.
And I have some thoughts for sure, but I I'm uh, I'm 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 processing right now.
Okay.
To raise my hand or something. I was looking at the zoning map, actually trying to zoom in on. On uh, the property itself and wondering if we can just. Put that lot. In HDR. Forget the, forget the whole. Forget the, forget the whole Rogers Lane. What if we put that lot and any other neighbor who happens to be there? And it wants to go HDR.
What do we think about that Keith? Spot zoning or?
It'd be spot, but, but um, uh, that's something we've definitely run by Dave. I mean, I think that goes without saying. Um, it, it, that's a thought for sure.
Virginia, I'm, I have to admit, I'm, I'm having a hard time still getting my head around all of the complexities of this. Is this something that might be helped? And Keith, tell me if, if you'd be willing to do this. Um, is preparing sort of a straw proposal for us to, so there's something concrete that we can, that we can look at and kick around the pros and cons of. And if we decide we need more data to answer certain questions, at least it sort of um, uh, solidifies those questions. Does that seem like that might be a good way to move forward?
So what, are there any of these options apart from the one we just heard? That you would be the direction that you would, I mean, you know, it's a lot of work to put all of these into separate proposals, if you know what I mean, like.
Right, I'm not saying.
If you, if we wanted to have this language that just took the IC district as is and added to its list of uses, the four, um, the four residential uses. We can imagine that, right? In our minds. Okay, so it's just the IC district and it has these residential uses in it. Would that be helpful? I mean,
I have a, I guess, um,
Yeah, Adam.
Quick question. Um, I guess the part I'm, I'm, I uh, am wrapping, trying to wrap my head around is I, Mark, our previous meetings, Mark had brought up the point that we don't really have any other uh, commercial air, commercial land in this area. So if we were to open all of it up to residential, what would that look like potentially? Residential is very profitable to develop. So obviously that's beneficial for the Donovan's, but that could have broader implications for the rest of the district and especially up um, uh, Canyon Road. So I'm trying to um, wrap my head around how we can make this work for the Donovan's and those few lots without eliminating the commercial uses in those lots for the expenses while not encouraging residential development in other parts of the, you know, C and IC districts. I'm not, I don't really see how we can do that in an expedient way without uh, looking at the entire district. But I guess, um, would it be possible to create a residential use? Kind of what I'm, what I'm, would like to, I hate to say like to avoid, but will be, you know, if we had a, a large amount of residential development where we have land open for commercial uses. Would it be possible to avoid some of that by creating uh, a broader, like a larger density requirement for residential specifically in this commercial district and then adding residential to, to it? So we were not all of a sudden opening the door for a bunch of one acre or point five acre lots and residential popping up, but also giving the Donovan's leeway and other people leeway to have, you know, break up a piece. I mean, obviously there is, uh, we would be, I mean, we wouldn't be limited by anything, but, but to meet the requirements of what the Donovan's looking for and to be, you know, genuine in our approach, we would be limited by what the acreage of their land is and what, what's a realistic and feasible subdivision for them to have. So I see that there's some, there's a little bit of nuance there, but more broadly speaking, could we use that, um, is that a tool we can use and, and what would that look like? I guess I'm not, I'm not entirely familiar with the acreage, acreages and kind of how that would all work.
So, so i- if I could cut in, uh, just, just to make sure that I'm clear in what you're saying, because I, I kind of wrote it down. So, so basically in this IC district, add the residential use, but as a result of adding that residential use, you increase the density for that particular use.
So, uh, sorry, the opposite Keith. Uh, increase the, the lot size. Sorry, decrease the density, create, create a larger, a larger, yeah, okay.
Decrease the density, yes, yes.
Yeah, ju- just so we, I mean, I think we want to encourage residential, right? And I, and I think we want to do that throughout town and we want to do it to create affordable and reasonable uh, living situations. But at the same time, we don't want to do that by taking all of the commercial and industrial commercial land that we have in this area and turning into point five acre lots. So I don't know how we circle balance there. I think that's tough to do. But, um, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, no, I see where you're going with that. Definitely.
And then I guess my other question is maybe, maybe for the Donovan's or whatever, or, or for the, maybe more accurately to uh, tax maps is what are the acreages that we're talking about? And what, what's a reasonable acreage to require for a single family home or residential subdivision? How does that all work? Do you deserve, can we require an acreage for only a subdivision that? I don't think we can require an acreage for a subdivision that would only result in a single family home that would be different from an industrial commercial.
Yeah.
Is that true? Or it would have to be the same size requirements or how, how does that work?
Yeah.
Can I try to answer some of that?
Sure.
Can I try to answer? Okay, so how our property, how our property is, is we are just about eleven acres. About one point eight of those acres is actually in Jericho. And it is probably very unusable land for the fact that it is very rocky. This is the terrain. We have already had our property surveyed in the past in two thousand and eighteen. We're looking at drawing the line up in our backyard to where we'll sit on like three, I think it's like three point one. And there will be just over five acres between the subdivision line and the Jericho line. Because behind us as well, I don't know if any of you know this, because um, this side of town is not well known. And this is probably the most known it's been in a long time, is we have the power lines back there. So there is Velco who has access to that. But those five acres are on, on our side of it. They are beyond, the power lines are just beyond that. Now, not that this probably makes a lot of difference to anybody, but there is negotiations with Jason and ourselves as far as who owns Patterson's. He is only interested in what he is, has his tanks on. He has probably another eight, possibly ten. I have not even looked at the maps yet. And he's like, I don't even know what I own. But because it abuts us, that would allow us a bigger area. You know, we're talking about doing this. We may sell a lot or two. We also have six children. And if we all know that it's this difficult now to purchase houses and land, can you imagine what it's going to be like when our nine-year-old and our sixteen-year-old, let alone our thirty-something-year-old children? So there's a good chance that those lots will just sit because we will want our kids to have them one day. So, but that's what's back there. And there is no way a business is going to want to go back there. There's no road frontage. At one point, we went to the town. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, my, my concern, just to be really clear, my, my concern wasn't what you're going to do with your land. It was more on the Canyon roadside, like Caterpillar. If we all of a sudden started seeing like, you know, if it became cost effective for these sand pits on Canyon Road and the uh, land, a little bit of land behind Caterpillar, it's not the, not in the flood plain to turn into residential lots. So that was kind of more my concern. I think with your land, there's, there's a, you know, family history and uh, and geographical constraints that will make that development look great in town and work well.
Uh huh.
But I guess my, what I would pitch then, I think like, would it, would two acre, would a two acre zoning or a two point five acre zoning be uh, out of line with what we do in the rest of town? And would that, would that discourage the uh, development in Canyon Road from being so um, so profitable?
Can you explain to me what this two point five acres is? Are you saying per lot?
Yeah, per lot, sorry, yes. So.
So ours is already, so when, when we already had Hamlin do it, we were told that we can do one acre lot increment.
So that's what you would be interested in having is one acre lots?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so that, and that, and that's, that would be in line with where the rest of the town is at. Um, on, on the larger lot size, correct? Is that correct, Virginia and Keith, theory?
It's all, yeah, one acres is what everything is, except for the smaller ones in the village. But I don't know that that helps you to
Yeah, I agree.
discourage residences versus businesses.
Yeah. Okay, I think I might have found a dead end, so.
I'd like to get some movement in this. Um, anybody else? I don't mean to hijack it from you, Virginia, but.
Yeah, no, I think it would be good to try to get some direction. Chris is saying he's leaving the meeting, but if everybody else wants to stay, I think we still have a quorum. If everybody else is still here for another few minutes.
I gotta go too. I'm exhausted and I've got three kids here on a sleepover. I need time to be here, I mean, it's nine, but I'm, I gotta go.
Okay. Um, all right, well, that is our quorum, I think. Wait, me, Adam, Mark and Allison, are you still here? Is Allison still here? I don't know. She's still here.
She's still here in, in theory.
Well, Allison and, um.
We have a quorum? Is that how that works?
Yeah. We have, Mark is still here. Is Mark still here?
No, I'm still here.
Okay, good.
Me, so, yeah, so we're gonna go on talking a little bit longer, Chris and Joy, but if you have any ideas about this for next time, look at the parcel viewer. It has all that information about the size of the lots. If you just Google parcel viewer, you will be able to pull up Richmond and you will be able to see all the lots laid out and how many acres and who owns them and all that kind of stuff. So if that would be helpful to people, go and look at that.
Very familiar with it. I'll do my homework. Thanks, guys. Good night.
Okay, thanks, Joy. Yeah.
See ya.
Yep. We'll fill you in. Um, so let's see. Allison, do you have any thoughts about this? Would you like to just add these residential uses into the existing district? Would you like to try to just add the Donovan lot into the HDR? Would you like to try to work with the PUD? Jumble?
And can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I, I'm just confused with my mute and unmute here.
Yes, no, you're on.
Well, um, I think I'd like to study it a little bit more, but, um, I think we just have to deal with what's there, what's traditionally been there. Um, what hardships we might impose upon people unknowingly by changing things that I maybe don't need to be changed. I, I think I'd like to just learn a little bit more about it. I'm not that familiar exactly with, with that space. So I, I don't really want to make a judgment about that.
What sort of information would be useful to you, do you think, to understand more about the area? What kinds of information would be handy? Would you like to?
Well, I guess I just like a map of, of what the, I'd like to look at a map of it and, and maybe just go visit it and see what they're up against.
Yeah, well, we've definitely had one field trip out there, which Keith and I went on with them. And they spent a lot of time showing us around. So if we can come to some kind of a date that people would actually come to a field trip, we can do that again, if that would help. Maps, we've got, we can look at maps. We've got all kinds of maps we could look at.
I'm happy to have anybody over.
Thank you.
I, I've, I've been completely uh, occupied with my swimming business this summer and it will be coming to a, a halt rather soon. So I'll have a little bit more extra time within probably even a few days to, to look at it further, but I, I don't feel right about making a comment at this moment.
All right, well, I guess we're gonna have to wrap this up, but why don't we start by?
I guess, can I say one more thing, Virginia?
Yeah, yeah, please.
The, the sense I'm getting, and I'm not the best at reading people, but the, the sense I'm getting that for the, uh, if there are two separate things and to, we, we're trying to expedite the Donovan's and this whole subdivision thing or, or, or some kind of occupancy, but at the same time, uh, kind of reconcile the whole districts and all that. And uh, it seems like seeing what our options are with the PUD might uh, solve the Donovan's issue while not forcing us to act offhandedly and quickly on the whole district. So I, I don't, I guess I'm not sure. I know you had briefly talked about that and what that would look like in, in kind of how that's in conflict with itself. And how the residential PUD is allowed, but within a residential PUD, residences are not allowed. So what is that, what does that option look like? And what would that do for the Donovan's? And what does that leave open for us long term?
Uh huh. Well, we could certainly work that up, right Keith? I mean, I think we need to do that anyway.
Even off the top of your head, Keith, is that, is that something that could potentially solve this or is that gonna be like, or is that gonna require variances for them? Or I don't want to put work on you if it's not going to be a.
Yeah, and I, I've got to dig down again deeper. I, 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 I work, I, I work steadily, you know. So I, I just want to make sure I understand exactly where we want to go with this. Um, the language is conflicting and uh, we, we, that, that may be an avenue at that point, honestly.
So if we were to unconflict that language by allowing residential uses, so allowing a residential PUD and also allowing residential uses within the residential PUD, that would still require them to go to the select board for conditional use in a PUD application. Is that, that's correct, right? And so is that, if that process were to happen, what does that look like? I guess I've never gone through a PUD application, obviously. So what does that process, process look like? Is that a kind of similar to a conventional conditional use process and a subdivision process? Or is it more?
It's, it's a hybrid.
Hurdles?
Yeah, it's, it's a hybrid process is what it is. And it's pretty much spelled out on how you go about it. But there is a, a subdivision component to it because the language states that it has to, it falls under subdivision regulations in certain portions of it. Um, and uh, but I know that, that Tyler has the experience with this and I, I, I do also, but he specifically has recent experience with it. Um, and uh, so they'd be in good hands with, with Tyler in that, but we have to get that use allowed. That, that's, you know, to your point.
To, so we have to, okay, so we have to allow residential uses within that residential PUD and that.
Well, that's the question that I have. Can you say in your PUD section that you can allow uses that are not listed as allowed in the district where this PUD is? Because there are a lot of other things that you can allow. You can allow multiple ownership, multiple buildings. You can allow uh, many things that are not actually allowed in any district. So is one of those things that you could write in the PUD section saying you can allow uses that are not listed in your district?
Yes. Ye- yes, I would think, um, with the caveat that DRB approval would be required.
Yeah, well, PUD has to go through the DRB and there is more of a process to it. It's a little more elaborate than, than the conditional use or subdivision. You know, you have to do this master plan thing and there's some other things you have to do. So there's a little more work to it, but if it moves it forward faster than a lot of other deliberation, then it might.
Say, it sounds to me like the PUD process is slower than any of the other processes, but.
It's more involved.
Us opening up the door for another process might actually, the total time input might be less at this point.
Yeah, you're right.
For the Donovan's, yeah.
That's the question.
Okay.
But let me look into it, you know.
I think that would be worthwhile. I think that would take the pressure off. I, I do think that a lot of the people, I don't know, I know Mark probably does and I, I suspect, I know I do and I suspect other people do that, you know, feel the pressure to solve this problem for them, but also feel like we might be creating other issues and kind of doing things haphazardly in the short term. So if we can use that avenue to solve their problem without forcing us to kind of. doing things haphazardly in the short term. So if we can use that avenue to solve their problem without forcing us to kind of um, rush through this, I think that would be worthwhile and buy us some breathing room.
Yeah.
Well, I, I have a couple of other thoughts. Could I say something?
Sure, go ahead, Allison.
Yeah, um, what about, I'm, I'm, I didn't get enough of the exact details to know exactly where this fits in. But what about the fact that the Donovan's are certainly grandfathered into being uh, citizens who been here and had a business for a while and, and uh, we don't want to take anything away from somebody that has already been um, a, a part of our community. And I just think that the whole idea of a grandfather in some fashion about this might possibly apply. And I guess the other thing that's on my mind right now that I'll just say it generally is this whole concept of the five units per acre. I think I personally am going to spend some time in Montpelier talking about this. I think that entire state's law needs to be changed, uh, certainly to exempt areas that are contained with a flood zone. We, we don't have, what?
I'm, I'm sorry, Allison, uh, they are.
This is a totally different topic, but it's on my mind and I guess I'm, I'm not able to focus on some of these.
I think they, Allison, I think they do exempt that. Any, anywhere in the special, the flood hazard, special flood hazard overlay district or whatever is not required to permit new units. So that's one of the main, that's one of the few exemptions to the state law actually is, but in, in the flood districts.
Yeah. But Allison, you certainly can stop by and, and we can discuss if, if you, if you want some clarity on that. Um, and also I'm here for you, you know, you, you, you know that. You can, you can drop in anytime, you know, give me a little bit of warning maybe. But uh, I'd be more than happy to uh, uh, discuss it with you and also what's going on at Rogers Lane too.
Yeah, and look at the maps, you know, you can look, Keith will help you look at the maps if you want.
Yeah.
Why, I mean, why do we feel obligated that we have to comply with this five units per acre in a flood zone if that's already exempt?
What, what are you, which area are you talking about? Are you talking about the Rogers Lane?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the whole village.
Oh, well, that's, that's a separate discussion, but.
I know it is. I, I guess that's what's bothering me. So I'll, I'll get off that right now. Don't let me bother you with it.
Yeah, you don't, don't have to do it in a flood zone, but you have to do it everywhere else because it's the state law. Mm-hmm. So, anyway. But go talk to Keith, that would be helpful, I think. The other thing that we might want to look at is this question of how would it be looked upon if we just put the Donovan's lot into the HDR? Is that a complicated question, Keith? Do you think that's a complicated question or is that something that?
As, as a single lot, I, I'd run that through Dave. I, I wouldn't, I would attempt to answer that at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're right, it, it sounds like spot zoning to me.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. All right, well, I guess we'll look at the PUD next time. Um, you know, the, the thing about Canyon Road, I just wanted to say, Adam, you talked about Canyon Road. You can, you could separate out that piece of the IC. There's no reason why that couldn't remain an IC if you want to have an IC, although there's neighborhoods all around there now.
Yeah, that's true.
Two thirds of that district is in the farm of the, of the Conans. And the other one third is butted right up against a new neighborhood and there are neighborhoods across the street. So.
Well, I was just wondering that.
Resource, you can have extraction of earth resources in any district, including the AR. So.
Now that you point that out, I, that's a good point.
It's like.
I guess I don't, I don't have a strong opposition to just adding residential uses in the entire district. I think that might be a heavier lift for some other members in, in the community at large, but I personally think that people should be able to do residential uses based wherever they want. If people want to live somewhere, then that's on them, but um, yeah, I don't have, I don't have any opposition to that. I would say we just add residential uses to the uh, can, I, I, I would say two parts. We consolidate the IC and the C district into one district. And then we add residential uses with maybe some um, constraints that.
Yeah.
You know, show that, protect, exactly, yeah. So I have no opposition. I actually think that would be the, I think that's the best outcome. Um, but yeah, yeah, I have, yeah, that sounds great to me. Um, I don't know how other members would feel about that, but.
We could write in constraints that would protect the businesses that are there, you know, that would protect the residences that, that are there. You know, I mean, they would be perfect and if it was all gonna go residential, then it might all go residential, but we need a lot of residential, so anyway.
It's a, it's a little disingenuous to say we need residential and then say we shouldn't add residential to the entire district, so.
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of thought of that in the last few minutes.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think that's as much as we can do tonight. We'll try to put some of those things together for our next meeting and take up the last couple of topics for.
Keith, do you know what we want to, want you to put together or is that, did we ever settle on that? Are we?
So, so, so what I'm, my notes to myself are um, looking at the, at the PUD, changing the language for that. Um, I also have the HDR for the Donovan lot as a single lot, which I think is a stretch. Um, and obviously uh, the, 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 allowing the use and combining the C and the IC into just the C uh, seems to be one, one of the avenues that we should definitely pursue. Uh, it certainly is the cleanest uh, in my mind. But like you say, you, you've got to get it past the commission and you got to give me that direction. But I mean, we, we've already researched that latter one that we're talking about. And I could reach out to Dave on, on the spot zoning one, um, see what's going on. So if, if, if that could be a pound of sea, I mean, that could be the silver bullet, but I, I don't know. Um, we're not in New York, we're in Vermont. You couldn't do that in New York in a heartbeat, but I don't know what you can do in Vermont. And uh, yeah, and the PU, the PUD, I don't know. We'll have to look into that. So that's what I have on, on my, my list.
Okay, that sounds good. And I think as we went through the first of those bullet points with the Act 47, we arrived at some directions there, so.
Right, and we'll need to pick up four and five at some point too, but obviously we'll discuss that tomorrow.
Yeah, Keith and I, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any other business before we break here? Thank you all for hanging in there with this. We would like to make some progress on it. Um, and you know, if you want to look at maps or anything or take a tour, just let me or Keith know and we can definitely do that. Um, so if no one has any other business, Keith, you have any other business we need to talk about right at the moment?
I do not. I think my uh, uh, my, my battery level is pretty low right now, so.
In all ways, probably. All right, so uh, we could have a motion to adjourn at 20 minutes past nine. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn it.
Okay, second.
9:22.
9:22. Second, Allison seconds it to adjourn, yes?
Yeah, yeah, I'll second it.
Yep, good. Is there anybody who is opposed to adjourning? Hearing no opposition, it's a unanimous decision to adjourn. Thank you all for coming. We have three weeks till next time and we are, you know, if you have questions about these things, if you can talk to Keith or get them answered somehow before next time, that's good. We can move forward with these suggestions that we're gonna work up. So, great. Thank you all. Three weeks till our next meeting, so we got a nice long time to fuss with this. Thank you for coming, Linda. We're trying.